Is it you can give me anything about that bill that?
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that. Excellent. Hey, welcome everyone, welcome. Welcome to 2014 in the city of Pecosin. Welcome to the meeting of Monday, January 13th. Hey, I don't ever use this thing, but I will. All right. Anyway, so January 13th, and welcome again. If we could all please rise, we'll have an invocation and lead you in the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, and thank you for the many blessings that we as a city enjoyed in 2013. We know that this is a new year, Lord, and that this year, like all years, will bring challenges, help this council to work together, to be, to listen to each other, to work together on issues, and come out with the best answers for the citizens. We ask this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We had a special presentation planned, but I don't see a person there to receive this, so we'll skip that item on the agenda. And then I will ask council for the approval in a minute.
Audience.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll have an audience for visitors. If you're here to speak on any subject besides what we have a public hearing about, we do have a public hearing tonight, if you want to address council on another issue, now is that time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors, and now I'll ask council for approval in a minute.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 9th, 2013.
Second.
The motion made and seconded that we approve those minutes. Any questions or comments? Now Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilmember Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay, in the work session of December 9th.
Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes of the work session of December 9th, 2013.
Second.
The motion made and seconded that we adopt those. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
And finally, the joint session with the school board for December 10th.
Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes of the joint work session with the school board of December 10th, 2013.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we adopt those also. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay, and tonight, we have a public hearing, and this public hearing is pursuant to granting a right of ingress and egress over, along, and through city-owned property located at 500 City Hall Avenue. Would you like to have staff present the issue, and then we'll open the public hearing?
I'll do my best to summarize the issue, and would note that Mr. Moore and I both worked on this together. As council will recall, almost a year ago, we were approached, you were approached, to see if the city was amenable to providing some sort of access solution for the property owner here. We, our initial contacts were with the Patricks, they're here, anticipate they'll speak. The issue is they have two immediately adjacent to one another landlocked parcels. If you think about City Hall, and you look backwards into the back parking lot, we're talking about the back right-hand corner, there are also a couple of for-sale signs associated with that property to give you a visual reference of where that is. After some discussion, Mr. Moore and I drafted, he drafted with my input, this proposed agreement, which was then reviewed and updated, revised slightly by the requesters. Essentially, what it would do is it would allow them the ability to an option agreement, which would have an approximately five-year life on it, to construct where the parking lot turns in the back, to come into the main parking lot, to essentially continue City Hall Avenue as a public street, to be constructed by them at their expense, or at a successor in ownership, to city public street standards, and bring it onto their property. In exchange for that, they would agree through this document to replace any parking spaces that are eliminated through that process, and also to provide an ingress and egress corridor for their property, through their property, to the properties in the south, providing additional then ingress and egress access into the back of that portion on the Big Woods. Mr. Moore, did I miss anything important?
No, you got it.
I think that summarizes it, Mr. Mayor.
I think that's it. Any questions, council, before I open the public hearing?
Will we discuss it after the public hearing as well?
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
I would just ask generally, roughly how many parking spaces are we speaking of? Not many, or a whole bunch?
Um, yet to be determined, but my unofficial guesstimation was about eight.
Okay, so not, not many. Does that parking lot ever fill up? I'm hardly ever hearing the data.
Yes, it does.
It does fill up?
Okay. This would make a portion of it a public street, thus, that would not fill up.
Okay. With that said, and with that introduction, I'll open the public hearing, and this is a public hearing for granting a right of ingress and egress along, over, and through city-owned property located at City Hall Avenue. If you would like to speak on this particular subject, now is that time. Anybody that would like to speak? In favor or against? Okay, seeing none, I will close that public hearing and ask for consideration by council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance of the city of Pecosin, Virginia authorizing the execution of an option agreement for granting of an easement for the right of ingress and egress over, along, and through city-owned property at 500 City Hall Avenue.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we approve the ordinance. All right, no comments?
I think I missed a meeting a month or two ago when we re-discussed this, am I right? I know we discussed it a year ago, I was there for that one, I remember.
That's probably right.
My question is, we decided that this would be the best way for them to get through, and going left in front of City Hall and around was not an option because why?
Left and around.
We didn't own that land, so we couldn't?
And they didn't either.
Okay. And then, my other question is, if they, they were going to make sure it's a proper V-dot street, does that include what already is there, which is not a proper V-dot street, I think?
Um, the section, as drafted, the section that they would construct would be to public road standards, so there's, there's nothing in it that speaks to any other portion of City Hall Avenue.
Because my concern is when you turn right in front of City Hall to come back around it, that's a relatively narrow street, and a pretty tight turn, and if we're going to, I think, I think their intent is to potentially build numerous dwellings, that might be problematic, that portion particularly, I'm thinking to the side of City Hall. The front of City Hall is good.
Okay.
So did we come up with any solution for that? Would we have to upgrade that?
Well, I think the purpose, and correct me if, if I'm wrong, Randy, here, but I think the, the purpose of, of tonight's conversation is, are we okay and just to offer this easement? We don't know what the landowner or the property owner is going to do, you know, what we do know is that the landowner is landlocked, and they've asked the city to help, and in exchange for, because the city didn't want to set a precedent of, of everybody comes off, off of existing parking lots within the city, be it school, be it this or that. We definitely made sure that the language covered opening to more than just a single landowner. As far as the road going around, you know, depends on what, who they team with, and who they group with, whether that is a, the only access, or whether there's dual accesses, as that road could, could continue to go straight, as it does now, through a maintenance road to the other side of Oxford Road. I think it's, it's too early for us to tell what the, the final solution will be, but I, I think that for the purposes of helping citizens in opening the Big Woods, that this is the right thing to do.
And then, beyond that, should, should in the future sometime, the owners want to develop and make it lots of housing, we, we would then have the ability to have some input and say, well, this portion isn't sufficient to house. The current road wouldn't handle that?
Within the, within the overlay district that is now in place, the, that would allow some residential in what is, this is zoned R and D, correct?
I believe that's correct.
So it would require rezoning, which we would have?
Or, I'm not sure about that zoning, so don't quote me on that, but within that overlay district, we obviously get another say.
Right, that was my question.
In, in amounts and traffic flows and all that sort of stuff.
Thank you.
Okay.
Also, within the easement, it says that the extension of City Hall Avenue design will be subject to approval of city engineer.
Okay.
So it has to be designed to, you know, reasonable street standards to get to, get it approved.
Thank you.
Wasn't there some question about the ditch being, having to be relocated, or something? Did I? That was when we were talking about, is there another way to squeeze between the tower and the ditch itself, and that was not an option because the land was not? I remember something about the ditch, but I don't remember what the thing was.
That's correct.
And again, I'm going back in time a little bit with this as well, but I guess that this, when this opens up Big Woods, they'll also open up different avenues for folks to come in different ways, is that correct?
We are, we are definitely encouraging that.
Yeah, that's a big part of this. And also, question is, the spots will lose, the eight spots, I guess that will now be street parking on the new roadway?
No, they would have to replace those eight spots.
That's part of this.
Okay. All right.
We would get the parking spots back.
All right. Somewhere else, right.
Okay, any questions, any further questions or comments? All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve in a second, as I recall. Any further discussion? All right, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is new business, and this is a resolution reconvening the city of Pecosin mitigation coordinating committee.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you've been on council for a while, or, and/or followed closely, what we've done as a community to continually improve our ability to plan for and withstand severe weather events, then you are familiar with this process that we last went through in 2008, that's when we began it, actually, the update to the plan was completed not too long after I arrived here as city manager. It requires a five-year review and update, and we're talking specifically about the hazard mitigation plan. What we are proposing, Mr. Bryan is here and will serve as lead staff for that group, is to essentially replicate the same process that we used last time, using a very similar committee format. You see the, a list of proposed ballots in a minimum, but, but could be more, group of folks that were proposing to work with us, who, you may recall that following the last review, we, you changed somewhat the mission of that group to serve as an ongoing advisory group, but in order to sort of meet the requirements of the process, we just sort of need to recharge them with this update.
And state their membership.
And update their membership. Mr. Bryan is here, if you've got questions for him, I, I would note to you that this, this is part of the, of the plan that helps us to achieve the TRS 8 rating, which is the discount, gets us the discount on homeowner's insurance, excuse me, flood insurance, and is, is an ongoing part of what's required to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. Mr. Bryan, would you like to add anything?
Sorry, you covered very well. We'll have a series of meetings.
Sorry, like, nobody will be able to hear you from home if, if we're back there. We, we would hear you, we'd be happy.
What's going to take place is we're going to have a series of meetings consisting of the city staff, citizens, members of council, and we're going to look at the plan, and with the help of the contractor, that's going to redo, rewrite the plan for us, and see if there's any updates that need to be made. We'll have some public forums for the citizens to attend as well, so everybody's in the loop, and, and that's pretty much about it.
Great, and hopefully, you know, I'm bargaining on the model being demonstrated to us, and I would encourage your committee to come see the, when that gets demonstrated to council, that we get, that we get your committee together, so that they can see the tool that may be available to help them do that planning.
Absolutely.
And I would remind the citizens that it's not just about flood, but you have fire prevention in there, you have marshfires in there, you have?
It addresses fire prevention, it addresses any type of man-made disaster, weather events, so it's, it's, it composes everything, it's going to encompass everything.
Okay, thank you very much, and thanks for leading that. All right, anybody prepared with a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution reconvening the city of Pecosin mitigation coordinating committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we reconvene that committee. Questions or comments?
Just have a question for the manager, is this the best way to handle this, as opposed to like making a standing committee or something, or just every five, or how many every years, we just re, re-convene?
I guess my answer to the question is, it's not the only way to handle it, but it's one that seems to have worked for us, rather than having a committee who does some work, and then we say, thank you very much, and then five years later, we see if they might be interested. This is a way to sort of keep the continuity going, but from a formalized step, we need to recharge them every five years.
Okay.
All right, anything else? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
The next item under new business is an ordinance adopting additional personnel policies to be included in the city's personnel policy manual, and this deals with annual leave and sick leave.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As council will recall, over the last year, and actually, almost every year in recent memory, the General Assembly has made changes to the retirement program, the Virginia State Retirement Program, and one of the changes that they made recently was to create a new classification for employees, now called hybrid employees. They have a different retirement setup and their plan than we do as, as more senior employees that have participated for a while, and as part of the new program, the hybrid plan, employees now must be offered short-term and long-term disability care. That is not something that is presently provided to, to the Plan One and Plan Two employees, the, the more senior employees, and, and ongoing, the public safety employees. And anyway, in recognition of the fact that new employees that come on after the first year of this year, will have the short-term disability, localities have been making some modifications to their sick leave policies specifically, and as it then relates to, to annual leave, but essentially, the, the meat of this is, in recognition of the fact that they now have short-term disability coverage, we're proposing to reduce, for the hybrid employees only, the amount of, excuse me, sick leave that is earned each year from 12 days to 10, because in certain circumstances with prolonged illness, you're going to have short-term disability coverage, so they're going to have a different type of income replacement. Also, in recognition of the fact that that short-term disability coverage over a period of time would likely reduce the amount of sick leave that a person may take, we are also suggesting that we lower for this group of employees, none of whom are on the payroll yet, by the way, the total amount payoff for sick leave balances, and essentially cut that in half, and we serve, that's, that's from 6,000 down to 3,000. And those are, those are essentially the, the highlights of it. Ms. Wiggins may want to hit anything that I may have missed, I would tell you, I appreciate her work on this, as well as, as the finance department's work on this, a whole bunch of people in Virginia, a bunch of localities have been working on this, and we've been encouraged, if we're going to make a change, to do it as quick as possible, so that we don't have hybrid employees that are a different set of rules than new hybrid employees, that would essentially create a fourth class.
Can you give us, can you give me an example of a hybrid employee? Who is, who is a hybrid employee? And it doesn't have to be by name, but more by position.
We don't have any.
We don't have?
The definition is in the, in your ordinance.
Yeah, I got you.
Any employee who is hired?
So we're, we're preparing in case we end up with these.
We will have them, it's any employee that's not a public safety employee, that's new to VRS and hired in after the 1st of January of 2014.
So what you're really saying is, this is all about VRS?
Yes, sir. Well, it relates to VRS, that's what changes it. VRS provided for them a benefit that is not afforded to the, to what we consider our average employee, and we think that that limits, in some degree, the amount of sick leave that they will need.
We understand.
And should, should reasonably accrue and expected to be compensated for.
I got you.
Ms. Wiggins, did I miss anything important?
I think you got it.
Okay.
You understand.
Yes. Okay. Is there a motion by council?
Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance adopting personnel policies for inclusion in the city's personnel policy manual adopted August 27, 2012.
Second.
Motion made and seconded that we approve this ordinance. Questions or comments?
Yes, a question. Randy, in looking at this, I imagine the situation where a city employee, maybe a police officer, had planned annual leave over the holidays for vacation, and there's a maximum carryover leave, and because of some city emergency or whatever, they were unable to take that leave, would they just be then out of their leave, or is there a way to compensate for that?
Although the proposed policy changes don't change that, essentially what our policy is, is they've got a reasonable amount of time to essentially ask for an extension. I think that, you may recall from previous conversations when we readopted this, we've, we've been extremely flexible over time with people, and no one that was called to work in an emergency situation would be adversely infected. We have enough flexibility to make sure that doesn't happen, and it won't happen, on the watch of anybody that we have here.
Very good.
Councilman Southall, I used to, we had a carryover amount that we lost, if we didn't use it, and that's kind of what you were alluding, we changed that policy now, if you'll look on the annual, it's maximum compensable, and we allow the employee to carry over any number hours of leave now, it's just when they leave, we only pay a maximum amount, so they don't lose any figures anymore.
Okay. We have a motion made and seconded, any, any other further questions or comments? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay, and final item under new business is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of, of understanding with HRSD.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the item before you was discussed with you most recently in a work session last month. Essentially what this is, is a proposal that all of the communities that are part of the regional consent order pertaining to HRSD and wet weather, essentially enter into a memorandum of understanding whereby HRSD would handle, through their rate structure and through their planning, implementing, constructing, construction process, the regional wet weather plan. A recent study that was undertaken to look at the possibility of full consolidation estimated the, the total savings to the region by the larger economy of scale of dealing with as a region, as a, a number approaching a billion dollars. Essentially, what would happen under this, we would continue to maintain our own collection system, our own employees, we would deal with those types of things that we have traditionally done, but as the more extensive, and, and in some cases, very expensive, regional wet weather plan elements are constructed, they would be planned and managed and constructed locally through, through HRSD. Bob Speechley, Ellen Roberts, and I, those two more than I, spent a great deal of time along with their counterparts across Hampton Roads to get, help to get to an option that, that we believe as staff sort of maximizes all the positives of this type of consolidation, while, while keeping back some of the things that were viewed as potentially not as positive, such as loss of the local collection system and that type of thing, also maintaining our own employees to deal with that. Ellen is here and prepared to speak, if you'd like her to, and Mr. Speechley is here as well, I'm sure he wouldn't mind speaking as well. Ellen, did I miss anything significant you'd like to highlight, or Bob, both of you?
Okay.
We heard this in work sessions, does anybody need any additional information? I guess kind of to simplify it for those that are viewing at home, and those that are sitting here, what this really does is it allows us to maintain local control of our, our pipes and our pumps, and all of the things that we do really well, and that the things that HRSD does, which is treatment and upgrades on their treatment facilities, and really, your, your bill that you get from HRSD has a treatment portion. It allows them to, to bill for those upgrades, like you said, that are up to a billion dollars, instead of us trying to handle it locally. So it's a, it's a good hybrid, in, from what we've heard, and is there a motion to move forward with us?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with HRSD.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, further discussion? If not, Judy, please.
I just want to clarify, it is a memorandum of agreement, my mistake on the, on the understanding.
Okay.
It's actually an agreement.
Change my motion to be memorandum of agreement.
Okay, Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.
Okay. And it's, comments of the city manager, I will remind you that the, the city attorney did say that the tip-off of the UVA Duke basketball game is at 7 o'clock, but now it's time for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, I really only have one thing, which is just a general statement, while, while this evening's meeting may be one of your shorter ones, for those that like to participate in our process, watching at home, I would, I would anticipate that our next meeting will be considerably longer, and then we'll have a number of public hearings, and also the pre-budget public hearings, so would invite people to tune in and participate in that process either at home or, or in person. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Bud?
Like wish everyone a happy new year, hope the year is prosperous, and everyone does well.
Tracey?
I have nothing at this time, thanks.
Nothing additional, other than thanks for all the good things that the city did last year.
Councilman Vernal?
Two things, very quickly. First of all, I want to congratulate the high school wrestling team, they won the, the division at the duels, and if I read it correctly in the paper, I think it was the first time since '97 that the team won, that the, that they had individual winners, but the entire team, so that's a real accomplishment.
Excellent.
Thank you for that. A lot of people are very proud of that. And the other thing, just another kudo to the public works department, I was driving to the store the other day, right after the storm, and I noticed ditches were full down on Bayview, and I thought, when I get home, I might want to call and let Tom know if then, no one, I came back a half hour later, they were out there cleaning it, I didn't get a chance to, to call, so they were right on top of it, and I think that speaks well for being aware of what's going on around town. for being aware of what's going on around town.
Yes, it is. Buddy?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Henry?
It's just been a fast year, me being the first year on, on board, and I wanted to especially thank you guys and gals on the city council, especially Randy, and Evie, and Vicki, and Judy for putting up with me with a lot of questions. Thank you. Happy new year.
Okay, I have nothing further, I think as Randy said, there's much harder issues to come, and we'll see those in the, in the coming weeks as we enter another budget here. All right, so thank you very much, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. No move, Mr. Mayor? Second. Motion made in second, Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by vote is seven to zero.